Is not a significant amount of money considering the time and money and anxiety and heartbreak that's been invested in an ordinance to protect the civil rights of the people of this community. And if there's a better place to spend $5,000, I don't know what it is.
With that, I'll call the motion.
Ms. McLuhan?
Call the question.
We don't have that right. We don't. I understand what you're saying, but James, until someone comes forward or something, you know, there's, we understand this on a national basis that there's places where these problems, but I don't see it here. Do you? If you do, then show it to me. I don't. You know, you've got to put Eureka Springs first in its future, and you cannot throw money away on just anything that comes along. You can't do it.
Did I say it louder? I thought I called the question.
All right. Question's been called. All those in favor calling questions, sing fub, sing aye.
Aye.
What comment?
Jeez. What was the vote? Did you get it?
Six oh.
Did you vote?
I said no, five one.
That's what I thought.
I misunderstood. I'm sorry.
No, I had one last question.
So, does there have to be a second on calling a question?
Yes, there is. I'm sorry. Was there a second?
Oh, a second.
All those in favor, sing fub, sing aye.
Aye.
Okay. Still five one. All right. Motion is, what's, did you read the motion back?
To direct the city attorney to file an injunction against Act 137.
All those in favor, sing fub, sing aye.
Aye. You want a roll call, please? If you don't mind.
That's like a workshop. That was my comment.
All right. Come on. All those in favor of the motion, sing fub, sing aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
No.
President, no, I don't know yet.
I would like to do a roll call, please.
Roll call.
Mr. McLuhan. Ms. Eller.
Not now. Later, baby. Not now, no.
Mr. DeVito.
Yes.
Mr. Thomas.
No.
Ms. Snyder.
What Joyce says.
Is there any way we can?
Mr. Mitchell.
Yes or no?
Please.
Mr. Mitchell.
Yes.
Two four.
All right. All right. Motion fails. New business resolution for the final year budget. Let's see.
Wait a minute. If this is new business, can we get that guy in here so he doesn't have to wait with his little kid?
Second.
Wait, wait. I lost it. What are we?
The guy we put on the agenda, let's have him now.
Yeah. Can we move him up?
All right. Let's move him up. All those in favor of moving him up to, sing fub, sing aye.
Aye.
All right. Elijah in here. Liah or Elijah?
It's Elijah Hammond.
Elijah, sorry.
He doesn't know what's going on.
Okay. Would you like to go ahead and repeat what your?
Yes, on the sixteenth of last week, the mowing crew of the city went down Pine Street, and I live at 40 Pine, a second from the top, and they, the weed eater threw a rock and cracked the rear left window of my, the mother of my child's car. And I did all the, everything that, Bobby Ray was actually there, and then the, one of the Parks Department guys or the city guys came over and they clearly saw that it was them that did it, and everyone took pictures, and then I went to the police department and made a report like they told me to do, and then went and got quotes like I was asked to do and took them back to the police department. And then I've been dealing with Dwayne at the park, or the, yeah, Public Works Department, and apparently he can't even approve payment, so I'm just requesting payment to replace the window that the weed eater shattered.
You got the police report?
Uh, no, I don't have the police report. That's the quote from the glass company. And I had a separate one that they have the actual other quote with the $40 for the tent. The police department has everything there. They have the other quote for the tent to be replaced as well.
So, it's $235 and then $40 to replace window tining. $275.99. Mr. McLuhan?
Just a couple of things, real quick. Which window was it?
The left rear.
So, it's just a, just a, a door panel?
Yes, yes. A door window.
Is that mine?
That's the quote I got from Williams, and that's what they gave me.
Who's Williams?
I mean, if I could get a cheaper one, that's fine with me, too.
Second thing is, have you got any verification from anybody in this, Mr. Mayor?
No, this is, today is the first I've heard.
It's all over at the police department.
I make a motion that if it's substantiated by?
Police report? Well, the police report.
Yeah, by the police report of the city employees, then it'd be paid out of mayor's budget.
Second thing?
Mayor's budget?
Well, why not?
Why punish the mayor?
Out of the city coffers.
Then we just, yeah.
Public works.
It's got to come someplace.
Public works.
From wherever city coffers.
Public works.
Public works. They got more money than us.
Yes. Second.
I already seconded it.
All right. Discussion. Mr. Mitchell?
I believe in the concept of tort immunity, and I understand, and I have a lot of issues, but the issue of tort immunity is, that's all I'm going to say.
We have, just for council information, in the past, similar situations happened on Hillside, and we did the tort immunity and failed to pay. So, I mean, that just passed, so. Did you have anything?
We pulled tort on Hillside? I didn't know that.
This was two, three years ago. James was on the council, I think, when that happened.
He was probably with us.
He probably was. All right. Any other discussion? Mr. Weaver?
I would like to suggest that, I understand what your motion is, but if it passes, you're leaving it kind of open-ended what you mean by verified or?
Substantiated.
Substantiated. You really need to kind of define what you, who you want to make that decision, whether it's substantiated, because this is the body that's supposed to do that according to our codebook. So, if you're saying somebody else is going to do it, you better appoint them as the person to substantiate the claim.
The ordinance states that the city council may grant a hearing for the claimant and authorize a settlement.
Typical procedure would be for him to present his material to you at this table. You review it and then make a finding.
Well, until this evening, I didn't know that I had to come here to get approval. I thought that Dwayne at Public Works was going to be able to approve it.
I think, I think he has done that. He has brought the information to us. I think what we're trying to do is get, you know, in the mayor's capacity to verify what he has told us is true, and if that is the case, then we're bad.
Now, that's.
Is that not what you're saying?
That's not the way the ordinance is written. The ordinance is, you're supposed to verify it, not the mayor. You're supposed to verify you were, to set the precedent, the way you're doing it, I understand this is only $200 or $300. It's a very small amount. But let's say he had a claim for $2 million, and you just said, "Well, Mayor, handle it if he's got the paperwork." That wouldn't be the way the state law dictates a claims to be normally done.
Then I suggest this. If you will define the procedure to this gentleman and to us, then we're good as you say we should.
I think that the proper procedure would be for him to present you with his paperwork, whether that means going to the police department and getting his estimates back. He, you also need to probably see the police report to see whether it substantiates that one of the city workers was using the weed eater, did cause the break, or whether it's simply they were told about it later that there was a break and they'd been weed eating in the area.
I mean, the mayor can't be our emissary in our behalf to do that?
He could bring it to you, but you're the one that has to review it, not him. Under the ordinance, you are the claims for it.
That's not sufficient to review?
That's just the ordinance. Or not the ordinance, but the.
And the mayor is right. This has been used several times in my very similar claims.
Mr. Mitchell?
I'm in, I understand, I'm, I, and I know everybody wants to be expeditious, but we get one estimate from one place for one amount.
Two estimates, actually.
All of this has been, it's been discussed.
I hate tort immunity. Just throwing that out there. I don't think it's right if our workers, our employees, our people, however you want to put it, if an accident happens, it happens. We caused it. Why should someone else be out of pocket? I mean, I understand to a point. I understand how it works. I'm just saying personally, I hate it. So, is there any way we could call right now the police department?
No.
And say, "Bring it in, verify," or we?
Can I run over there and grab it and bring it right back?
That was my second question.
No, I mean, we still, according to what he's saying.
It's, it's not necessary for you to be here. You get the proper documentation to City Hall, and it'll be on our agenda in two weeks. You won't have to be here.
Right, but then I still have to go.
Excuse me. The documentation, if you have to get eyewitness notarized statements, that I suggest, if it's in the police report, no problem, but as the city attorney stated, we have to review this, and we don't want to set a precedent, as he stated, for other claims to come before us. So, it's unfortunate this is going to take two weeks for.
So, then any other damages you're going to be liable for, too, then? I would think.
Well, yeah. If, if you find the city at fault, you know, for those.
They already admit it's fault.
Okay. So, you get that all in writing, you bring it to City Hall, it'll be dispersed to the city council, and we'll make our decision two weeks from tonight.
In other words, go ahead. Just bring your documentation, we'll, we'll go ahead and look at it in two weeks. You don't have to be here. But don't leave your window open and expect us to pay for interior damage.
Well, I don't, that's what I'm saying, though, is that I've got it covered and everything, and I do have a lot of it covered.
You put plastic, put plastic over your window and make sure it's covered.
But still, I have two young children, and I'm without a vehicle for, I'm not now.
Seat belts, child safety seats.
Well, there's, I'm sorry. That's the best we can do. All right.
Do you have a motion in a second?
No.
All right. Now, we're back down to new business again. Do I have a motion to discuss?
Some of.
Resolution for the final year. All right.
Get a second?
Get a second?
Yeah.
Yeah. All right. Thank you. Um, I think I'm up. Mr. Clark?
I really don't think I'll walk.
I know. It'll be nice, maybe.
But what you have is the actual numbers that we ended up with on revenue and expenses for 2014, and this is just adjusting the budget to those actual numbers.
Mr. Weaver?
Just to save questions on the next topic, the money that wasn't spent on the Public Works building just rolled back into the general revenue for 2014?
No, it's still there. It's still allocated.
It's still line itemed out?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. McLuhan?
Yeah, the, can you, can you just refresh my memory on the street fund where we had allocated 560 roughly, and we spent 852? Was that because of?
There was two or three reasons for that. One was, if you recall, the new high school came to us and wanted the resurfacing of the street on, goes down beside it. I don't remember what it's called. That was totally redone, and I don't remember what the cost was on that, but that's a part of that that wasn't budgeted. And there, because there were some, quite a bit of street funds available, Public Works Director chose to do quite a bit of street work around town, so. But I don't remember if the resurfacing of Greenwood, I believe it's Greenwood Hollow Road, was done in 14 or 15. I can't recall for sure.
The Lake LeCern section, is that what you, Lake LeCern?
The Lake LeCern section definitely was done in 14, and that was what, it's getting widened, and, I believe about a three-inch hot mix put on it and everything, so the buses could pass, if you recall. But that's what the majority of that additional cost was.
Secondly, on the, the fire department pension fund, I mean, it's not huge, but it's about 40 grand. Is that because of more employees? Is that what that was?
That was because we, say, we're, fire department, uniformed employees, come under law fee, the state retirement plan, and they increase their contribution rate during the year.
They, they increase their requirement for contribution?
Yes, yes. And what the percentage was, I don't recall off the top of my head, but that's primarily. And, of course, anytime there's a, there's an increase in either the wages or the overtime, there's a corresponding reaction, an increase in payroll taxes and benefits. So.
I understand.
That was the other part of it. There, if you'll notice, there was some, some increases in the, in the wages and stuff.
And on the, so if we go to the, the next page, the revenues, well, how much did we fall short? I guess that's what I'm asking. It doesn't, do I have that someplace?
You, I don't think, have the totals of the entire city, but I, as I recall, it was.
Not, not counting transit, but everything else. We don't, do we have, I mean, did we fall short? Did we cover it, or?
No, we fell short.
We fell short.
We fell short. So.
Several hundred thousand?
Couple hundred, as I recall.
Because it, plus we, we fell short, plus we went to the well and drew out the reserves.
We did draw out from, out from reserves, yes, for, for, to cover them. But we did not, that did not cause us to have to cash in any certificate of deposit or anything like that. It was just from other funds that we had. We still have all the same CDs we had before.
So, as I recall, when we were doing the budget last year, I thought there was identified there would be approximately 150 or 200,000 that was going into reserves. So, you're saying we didn't put anything in reserves? We actually used more money than we?
That's right. We did not put any money in reserves.
So, then my next question on this capital fund down here, we appropriated 230,000, but we only had 12,000. What, what is that?
I'd have to go back and look for sure, but as I recall, we bought a new street sweeper that was like 125,000. And I can't remember the other, that was the big, the one big thing. And, but the fire department, we had, I think, the opportunity to buy a big, big generator.
Oh, that's right.
And then we also, up there, had a new rural water truck, I believe, that had to go through the refurbishing, up through the prisons, and so on and so forth.
You know, I, my whole career, my whole life's been profit and nonprofit, obviously, and I, I take for profit very seriously, and I, I know a city is not a for-profit organization. I got it. But really, what it boils down to is how you spend the money at the end, when you're finished paying all the bills, if there's any leftover. So, you know, profit's not a dirty word. It's kind of nice. But I get a little concerned when we, we, we're overspending. It really bothers me. And here we are, half into 2015, and we didn't put anything in reserves in 2014, and I can't recall any reserves in 2013 unless I'm mistaken, or 2012, because I was on here a couple years before this, this term. So, this trend that, that I'm seeing here is, is making me extremely nervous and uncomfortable to, that we could be running a city of this size and not be putting stuff in reserve and, and just going hand to mouth. It's, it's a little, it's, it's really concerning to me that we, I think we might need to be a little more assertive in, in looking at financing and what we're doing and things that are going on here, because this is not a good position to be in.
Judge?
Well, as Lonnie stated, we didn't cash in any of our CDs that are in reserve, and the figure of 3,300,000, that's not the total budget, is it?
No, this, this is what we have in operating.
So, even at, even if, under operations, if you're 200 over, you're about 6% over budget, which, given, running a city that has all of the infrastructure in place from 150 years ago, and all of the demands on a city like Eureka Springs, trying to provide all the ancillary services for sometimes 10,000 people, 6%, yeah, you know, it's $200,000, but given the fact that, you know, it's spent on hard goods or spent on resurfacing streets and all, and I don't find that to be terrible, that we still have our CDs intact.
I might mention at this point, and I believe that most of you all will remember, that the mayor has indicated he wanted to start work on the 2016 budget early, and, and I think that means here in the next four to six weeks or something along that line. And I think that that'll be the real, really the time to address your concerns at this point. This is what we actually did, and all we're asking here is?
Approve it because it's done.
This was last year's balance sheet, basically.
This is just the cleanup, the final figures.
Yeah. I hesitate to use the word cleanup, but that's what's been used in the past.
Basically the balance sheet.
I understand. I always look at trends over a period of time.
I understand.
And this trend is not a nice one.
But you're not alone in that feeling. All right. Any other questions?
Probably have the businesses in the community are in that same boat.
Mr. McLuhan?
Well, I, I want to make a motion to approve this, but before I do that, I would like to make a motion that we set up a work, a budget workshop. We need it. I mean, it's, it's time, because we, you're right, we gotta, we need, it's time for mid-year budget review.
It is.
And, and to start on, on the next one. So, I think in July, we need to have that set up, if, 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 if the mayor's assistant could help arrange that as, if she did, if she has time.
Well, I can't address whether the mayor's assistant or not, but in answer to your question, yes, we need to, we need to start.
In conjunction with you, when you can have something ready for us to look at?
Well, I, for July.
For the mid, for the mid-year budget review.
You know, 15th or beyond in July. I'll have June, now, I have May's, and I just have to.
So, sometime after the 15th, we need to have a workshop.
Right. And we need to, we need to, to really look at it in depth and start planning for the 16 budget.
So, I, I would like, because if, once we make a motion and approve this, then we're on to something else. That's why I'm going to make that motion now, before we do this one.
Fine.
So, for the workshop.
I'll second that motion.
We got a motion to, you have a mid-year budget workshop next month when we get the finances uncompleted. Any other conversation, discussion?
I'm gone until about the 24th, so I will miss, probably miss it if it's not.
I'm sorry, you'll be gone?
I said I'll be gone until about the 24th, so if you do it before then, I'll miss it.
I'll, I'll be gone from that week also, so.
Why don't we just do it in August?
And we probably won't have the information until after that, so probably the week of 27th through the 31st, probably the last week of July.
Be back, right? Great.
Yep. So, we're trying to do that.
That'll, that'll help us also, because by the time we get the bank statements, which there, as you know, there's 20 or 30 accounts, get them, get the bank statements, all bank accounts reconciled and everything, and all pulled together, that'll, that'll give us a little extra time to get all that together.
And we'll have a council meeting on the 27th, so probably that following week, we'll have a workshop.
Okay.
Perfect. Okay. And I'll get, we'll, we'll get Diane to, see if I get in the schedule. Yeah. For Lance that. All right. All those in favor, sing fub, sing aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
Now, I'd like to make a motion that we approve.
Sign the resolution number?
Resolution, yeah. Sign of the number and, and read it for passing.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All right. All those in favor, sing fub, sing aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
You probably should do a roll call since you're actually approving.
It's a resolution.
A roll call.
As of 4:30 today, I didn't have the information, so I'm going to have to borrow somebody's in order to pull this off. Thank you.
Only the first page, right?
Fortunately, only the first page.
Yes.
Just that, that's what it out there.
Oh, please. Stops right there.
Okay. Mr. Mitchell?
Uh, yes.
Ms. Eller?
Yes.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. DeVito?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. McLuhan?
Yes.
Six zero. The resolution number will be 663.
A resolution amending the 2014 adopted budgets for the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas for the year 2014, appropriating money for each and every item of expenditure therein and for other purposes. Whereas the city council of the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, has determined that it is in the best interest of the city to amend the adopted budgets of the city and, whereas certain anticipated revenues and expenditures did not occur as previously budgeted. Now therefore, be it resolved by the city council of the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, that. Section one, this resolution shall be known as the Cleanup Amended Budget Resolution for the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, for the year 2014, and the attached 2014 budget documents present the actual revenues, expenditures, and appropriation adjustments for the period. Section two, that the amounts for each expenditure classification in the amended budget are hereby approved by the city council of the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, and they are hereby authorized and appropriated for the purposes set forth for the calendar year ending December 31, 2014. Revenues for 2014 in the general fund, $3,320,258. Appropriations for the general fund, $3,398,596. Street fund revenues, $559,572. Street fund appropriations, $852,076. Lot fee, $251,468. And appropriations for same, $249,733. Revenues for the capital fund, $12,652. Appropriations for the capital fund, $230,910. Revenues for the debt service, $1,267,619. Appropriations, $1,208,690. District court automation, $5,768. And revenue appropriations for district court automation, $3,994. Revenues for the fireman's pension fund, $336,619. And appropriations, $297,115. Revenues for the municipal court retirement, $1,098. Appropriations for the municipal court retirement, zero. Revenues for 2014 water and sewer fund, $1,430,246. Appropriations for same, $1,296,981. thousand, nine hundred and eighty-one dollars. Revenues for the transit fund, eight hundred and seventeen thousand, seven hundred and sixty-five dollars, and appropriations, eight hundred and fifteen thousand, four hundred and three dollars.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Next, uh, motion for discussion, the ordinance for the rate structure for refunding the two thousand eight and two thousand ten funds. Motion to discuss?
Yep. Yes.
Second.
Okay. How do you wanna?
I'll go first.
Do we got any questions? I mean, Mr. McCloud?
Well, I, we had, uh-
Beau, man.
Beau was here, yeah, two weeks ago and, and laid it all out for us. Of course, our concerns then, uh, and still now are, you know, what, what is the status of the hospital as far as a, a new structure being, a new hospital being built? And, uh, with the email that you received and passed on to the rest of us, it's, that's, that option looks pretty weak at this point. Uh, however, and so I think, I think we should probably proceed with this. It looks to be like a good thing for us to do. The, uh, the one thing that I suggest before we do that is transmit a letter to, to them and, and say, based on what, the information we have received from them, that, uh, we feel that, that, uh, the chances of the hospital coming are slim to none, or not exactly sure how you wanna word it, because it'd be coming from your office, of course, but, but that, 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 that we feel the deal's off, I guess, unless they can prove otherwise by our next meeting. And then I, then at the next meeting, then we should see about working on an ordinance to, to approve it.
Mr. Mitchell?
I, yeah, I, I don't think the refunding the two eight and ten bonds, putting them together, I think, wasn't it even when he talked to us, wasn't the hospital sewer run out there at about a million? That was kinda still separate anyway, wasn't it?
No, he, no, he, he thought the best idea was to-
Wait.
To plan them all together, yeah.
To wait and plan them together.
Yep, yeah, to put it all in.
But the money, when, when he laid out the money and the savings and all, that had nothing to do-
That, no, that, right, that did not reflect that.
Yes, that's what I'm trying to-
It, it would just save us money-
Yes.
In legal fees and publications and, and bond fees and everything, if we could do it all at one time.
Which we're not going to now. Got it?
May I say something, Mayor? Uh, the way I, in my conversations with Beau is that you can proceed, just like what you're talking about, but then before this is a done, excuse me, a dogly done deal. If the hospital comes along and says, yes, we're going to do it, then we can amend what's already been done, the groundwork, and just basically the numbers will change and, uh, and go ahead and include it. So, uh, that's what I understood. And as far as the status of, of this, right now, Michael Moyer with the Friday Law Firm, who has done all of our bonds, at least since I've been here, the ordinances and so forth, uh, he is working on this as we speak, and I have to provide him with, excuse me, some information for him to go ahead and be able to finalize that ordinance, so.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Uh, being, that being the case, then, you know, I guess in addition to what I just suggested, there really no reason why we couldn't instruct the city attorney to go ahead and prepare the ordinance. And if something comes up from them, uh, you know, during the next two weeks in our, in our, or the, whenever our next meeting is in, in July, uh, then we can address it at that point, but yeah, I mean-
Second.
Thank you, James.
Just the first part of his motion, not, not the-
I don't even remember what the second part was.
To have, instruct the attorney to go ahead and draft an ordinance.
Yeah, that, I remember that part.
Yeah, I think, don't they prepare the ordinance?
Uh, they have at the past, I think.
Oh, yeah, they're, they gave us one, didn't they?
Uh, is that? Yeah.
They need to look at it and-
Yeah. So we don't need, we don't need to pay the city attorney to do it.
Well, I think Tim reviews it, of course.
He needs to review it, though.
Yeah, yeah, we, we don't know, maybe some hobo wrote it or something, we don't know.
We oughta beat a horse.
Of course, uh, Michael Moyer is, uh, that's his specialty, is, is municipal bonds and stuff, and it's pretty technical, so, you know, it's-
All right, uh, we did have a motion and, a second, to go ahead and have an ordinance prepared for review, all right, for discussion. Anyone discuss?
Do we need to inform the hospital that they have until approximately, whatever you think this would be done, to come up with something validated, or it's off the books?
It's off the books based on the bond, so why discuss it?
I think they already know that.
I'm sure they understand what we're doing here.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, they already know that.
Okay, well, I mean, they knew that they more or less had-
I don't, I don't think it mattered.
We're beating a dead horse, they're not gonna build a hospital.
Didn't matter, did it one way or the other.
Okay, so then my second question is, that was number one. My second one is, are we still able to look into the possibility of taking the old high school property part-
Now, 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 let's keep on-
Point of order, point of order.
Shut up.
Keep on the bonds.
The bit about the hospital annexing that little teeny spit of land.
Now, let's keep on the bonds, so.
That's what I, oh, on the bond, I thought you went on the hospital, okay.
Mr. Mayor, I, I do think that it's, it's, it's good, a good thing and, and proven on our part to send them a letter. I mean, I really, I really think we should.
Okay.
And let them know that, what our intentions are. Yes?
Yes, sir.
And, and just a side note, the last term of the contract, as I recall, when I had that contract, this, this last contract we're under right now was a five-year, and there is no renewal on this next one, and we're probably a good two years into it. So they have a lease with no cut and run clause unless they chose to terminate it six months, but I think we've got about three years left on that lease, and then there is, there is not a re, automatic renewal, so that lease will be either coming up for renewal or it's, it's bye-bye. So everybody needs to be thinking about that.
All right, um, back to the motion.
Future.
Yeah, back to the motion. Uh, go ahead and have the attorney preparing an ordinance for the bond, uh, review.
Review the prepared ordinance?
Well, we'll go ahead and have the ordinance repaired.
Right.
And then we'll have our city attorney review it when we get it. Yeah. All right. All those in favor of the motion, sing five, sing aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. All right, motion to discuss public works maintenance garage.
So, motion, second.
All right, um, it's gonna be short and easy. We were supposed to have all the figures in, we have, uh, Dwayne has, we've gone out and have solicited another price from another, uh, contractor, and he was supposed to have the final figures in today, and he didn't get them. Um, so hopefully by our next meeting, in fact, definitely by our next meeting, we'll have a final price on that. We're looking at, and I don't know whether y'all realize, and I think y'all knew, the original, when he was, it was originally proposed and came up with a cost, uh, the building manufacturer was only proposing, um, more or less a lightweight building with a four-inch concrete slab, and by the time the architect and the structural engineer decided that we needed a thicker concrete slab and everything, the cost was gonna go up, we've gone up about, I think, about twenty-five thousand dollars over the original. We're not sure yet.
That makes it, what, one fifty?
Makes it up to about one fifty, yep. But we're still, we'll know for sure when we get it in here. So we'll know by next week, so we can put back on the agenda.
Will this building get built this year?
If we have the money.
I thought we had the money.
Well, we do. I mean, we, well, we need to increase it, you know, we'll need to come back to the council and-
For the extra twenty-five.
For the extra twenty-five, and then see what the council, how the council wants to do it.
Okay.
Which we'll do next, at the next council meeting.
Okay.
But yes, and also, and I'm not sure if the council was aware of this, we've also relocated the building from on top where the existing building is to down below to also save some more money by doing that. And then we're keeping the one up on top, and it will be used more as a storage building.
Uh, how's it gonna be, how is the new location gonna work for, for ingress and egress during the winter months?
It'll be okay.
It's gonna be all right?
Yeah.
That saves us money, thank you.
Yeah, they got salt and gravel, they'll, they'll-
Well, I, I realize that, I was thinking about that.
No, they'll, 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 they'll be able to egress and egress, yeah.
We were tearing the other building down in order to build the new building, now we have a storage building. That's called saving money.
Well, maybe there's the twenty-five thousand over.
Well, but, but we get to keep another building, reuse it. So anyway, all right, um, if there isn't any other comments on that? Um, okay, next is, is, uh, Mr. Mitchell wanted to talk about the water meter revenues and Carol Boone rate increase.
Motion to discuss.
Second.
Uh, you want me to have Lonny go ahead and start off, or you wanna?
No, sir. I'll have him.
You wanna bring up this, kinda up to date a little bit?
Thank you.
Thank you, Lonny.
Yeah, I know you don't.
Uh, from what I understand, from Dwayne up at the Grand Public Works, is, uh, that they have, and Mayor, correct me if I'm wrong here, they have about thirty percent of the meters installed, approximately.
Oh, yeah, well, they're, yeah.
And, uh, they're, uh, they're moving forward on them, uh, all the time, and, uh, of course, the residential meters are fairly easy to install, but in talking with the guys that are out there actually doing it, sometimes on the larger commercial meters, um, they run into problems of various types and so forth. They may get one per day, they may get four, five per day on the commercial side. So it's kinda slow-going, but, uh, and of course, they have to shut the water down and, and I think they're trying to work with, uh, the, uh, business owners and everything to not infringe on them when they do to cut the water off. And, uh, and I think that's, but that's what, what they're telling me, and one of the guys told me, he himself, on the residential meters, I think he told me that he installed about twenty-five new ones in one day. And, uh, I, I just couldn't hardly believe that one person could do that many, but he, you know, he's a, he's a really a go-getter, so at any rate. But that's kinda where we are, and I, uh, I made a comparison, uh, on what our gallons that we're billing have, have increased. I didn't bring actual dollars, the dollars are increasing, but gallons, uh, have increased, uh, typically around eight to ten percent per month, uh, from last year, uh, on an average. And, uh, so, uh, with all the rain that we've had and, and everything, I think that's, and we're not-
Good.
Uh, and, uh, we're not into, you know, our irrigation meters being utilized very much up to this point, but, um, and I expect that the revenue's gonna increase, uh, probably twelve percent to fifteen percent during this timeframe. Uh, so it's, uh, it's a, uh, really, uh, I think we're gonna, we're seeing some benefit from it, quite a bit of benefit from it. Uh, addressing the water rates, uh, we have not had, except for the three percent that, that I, my office has the authority to do. In two thousand eleven or twelve, I can't remember for sure if it was right after I came or if it was a year later, but some of you were here on the council at the time, and, uh, but that's the only rate increase we've had since, I don't know when, two thousand and seven, maybe, or something like that. And of course, you know that we, uh, and I don't remember for sure if it was the first of April or the first of May, I know it was at least the first of May, we had a twenty percent per thousand gallon increase, uh, from Carol Boone. We went from a dollar and a quarter per thousand gallons to a dollar and a half. And so, uh, we have not passed that on. And, uh, I have several newspaper articles, one is, uh, um, city of Berryville, they're posted, they proposed their rate increase, uh, as ordinance number nine-seven-seven. Um, and, uh, over at Springdale, Rogers, Bentonville, uh, all of those cities are, are proposing rate increases of varying, varying amounts and so forth. And, uh, I do have a rate scheduled here for the city of Fayetteville, and of course, they're proposing an increase also.
Mr. McCloud, can I ask you a question?
Yeah, yeah, is, is there a chance that there could be, I mean, if, if, if we're gonna talk about rate increases, I'm not really excited about that at all. However, if, if, if you're gonna actually make that a topic for possibly doing, and I don't know, does that, does that take a vote from the city to do that? They have to prove it?
Oh, no, no, not-
Just, just an ordinance? We can do it by ordinance?
City, the sewer has to take a public vote.
Okay, but just to raise water rates, we can do that. Okay, I mean, and maybe a spreadsheet on what we, what we collect or what we charge in relationship to other communities and what their proposed increases are, and, I mean, I, I mean, it would seem to me that, that if we've got a, if we've had this increase, we probably need to pass that along, possibly, but maybe that increase and, and the administrative part, you know, something to take care of the, the cost of, of that, and maybe, but I'd hate to try and do any more than that, you know what I mean?
Now, excuse me, before we, I think, and Lonny, correct me if I'm wrong, but the twenty-five cent, for twenty-five cents per thousand gallons equals five thousand a month? That's cost-
Uh, it's about eight thousand a month.
It's gonna cost the city about eight thousand a month. Uh, so, times twelve, nine-six thousand a year.
Uh, the only reason I brought up the rate increase was because on the agenda, it's the, has the Carol Boone rate increase there on the, on the light item for the agenda, and, uh, of course, I just, as a historical thing, because I've been hearing from people around town that the water rates have gone up, well, the rates haven't gone up, you know, uh, because we haven't raised them except for that three percent. And that was back in, like I said, two thousand eleven or two thousand twelve, and since then, there has been no movement, no change whatsoever on the rates, so. And just to emphasize that, we have not thus far passed on that twenty percent that we received from Carol Boone, so.
Mr. Mitchell?
The last water increase, didn't that council not choose to do it instead, that it turned out that you can make increases up to a certain percent on your own?
The, as I understand, the office of the director of finance-
Mm-hmm.
-has the authority to raise water rates annually based on the consumer price index of small southern cities, uh, or three percent, whichever is lesser. And so it's capped at three percent. That particular year, it was like almost four percent or, or a little more, and, uh, I proposed that we raise it to three percent. Council voted, and I distinctly remember this, to not take any action and let the director of finance do it.
I remember that, too.
And so I did it. And, uh, and every year, I have checked it since then, and it's been ver, the consumer price index has been, for small southern cities, has been very, very minimal, and so it hasn't been worth-
So, so this year- So, so this year, could you do the 3% and make, and catch that much money? I'm, I'm gonna ask you, 'cause somebody's going to.
You gotta have the CPI at 3%.
Well, is it?
I don't think so, but I'll check it and say, I, I checked it back in the, in, uh-
I doubt it, seriously. If it's anywhere close.
Okay, that's one. And then the, the second one on here, the analysis of the water meter revenues. I've been hearing the 30% installation for a, a fair while. Is that 30% of the commercial, 30% of the commercial and the residential combined?
I think it's a combined 30%, yes, sir.
So, is that 30% of the residential, if you looked at those meters that went in, how many, how many more gallons or how much revenue, revenue was, was increased because of catching, uh, more water going through? How much of an increase did we get off that 30%?
Eight to 10% in that what you reflected earlier, it went-
Eight, eight to 10%, yes.
Eight to 10%?
I can't define it between commercial and residential.
Okay, but just take the 30% raised, the, the amount of water going through and the revenue, 8 to 10%?
Yes.
So, we can take then 8 to 10%? If that's accurate, we could take 8 to 10% and take the total revenue for water and, and bump it up? 10%? 8%?
We, yeah, uh, what I, what I, I wasn't talking dollars when I was talking to you. Remember, I'm talking gallons.
Okay, but it, but it'll still equate?
It, it equates.
Now, did you, 8 to 10% in gallons or 8% in, 8%?
Gallons built for.
Built for.
Yeah, the gallons that we have built.
So, how much is that, in, how much is that going up in dollars?
Uh, I can't, off the top of my head.
Some's commercial, some's residential, it's not gonna reflect the same rate.
I understand that, but if it's 30% and the gallons went up 10%, it's, there has to be a dollar figure attached to that.
Exactly, but I don't have it.
And that dollar figure oughta be able to extrapolate it out to-
Exactly, but I don't have it right here.
I understand that, but that's what I thought I was asking for.
I could get it, I could get it for you at a, some future point.
Well, here we're sitting with a, a budget that obviously we didn't put any money in reserves and we've got all this potential revenue out there.
I can put it, I can put it together for you, I just don't have it here.
For, for the meeting in July, I think that'd be good to have.
We will have it.
Thank you.
Of course, remember too, that that money pretty much stays with the Water and Sewer Department too.
I know, but then, then we don't have to take money out of the general fund to move over to support water, do we?
Well, that's the whole point of, of, of the water meters and fixing our leaks is, and I don't remember what our rates were, we were, and I'm, I'm going back and Lonny can correct me, but at one point we were, we were only getting about 30% billing of what we were, uh, we were only charging 30% of what we were being billed from Carol Boone.
I think it's about 41%.
And I think we're, we're finally maybe up over 50%.
We're, we're typically making, yeah, over, well, over 50%.
So now, we're finally at least breaking even.
Yeah, anywhere you got a revenue stream and obviously you want to compensate to, to offset some of this-
You, you can't, you can't buy high and sell low like I do.
Yeah.
And you can't project the unknown because you might on accident have caught the offending meters and the other 70% may not reflect that same increase, so you can't project it out.
There is, there's a standard deviation one way or another, the, on it, but you certainly can get an idea, James. You, you really can here. And when it comes down to revenue, it's kinda nice to be talking about-
All right, we'll, we'll see if he can get this for our, our budget workshop.
Thank you.
Yeah. Any other comments, questions?
I do have, I do have one.
Yes, sir.
And that's just in relationship, uh, to, to water, since we're on that topic. And, um, someone gave me a copy of their bill the other day and, and, and when they had remitted their payment, they, they were, they wrote the check for one penny less than what it should've been. And they got a notice from the, the Water Department that they were gonna have their water shut off because of this one cent, and, you know, and they had to, it was sent out in an envelope with, you know, the regular stamp on it and everything else.
So, it cost us 32 cents to get a penny?
Huh? Yeah.
Or 40, 42 cents, whatever.
I was gonna say, for an envelope opening.
Yeah, at, at the time, so, I mean, you know, things like that might just be considered as a carryover in some way or something.
Well, I'm, I'm not aware of that situation, but-
It happened in my show bill.
We're taking steps to keep that type of thing happening. And I don't know what timeframe it had.
I wrote 13 instead of 23 and I was charged $9.
It was, it was just, this was last month.
Not paying in time.
They gave me a copy of the bill and I had to roll the contents and bring it with me.
But I looked and I thought, what?
I'm surprised, 'cause the girl we've got out there is very conscientious.
Yeah, I mean, it's just-
Yeah.
Well, we've got, if I might just add something real quick there. We've got a person out there that, like the mayor said, is very conscientious on the billing. That's why I was kinda asking you. We also have a, a man, one person reading all the meters, you know, instead of two now. And he is probably one of the most accurate people that I've ever been around as far as numbers and so forth. He's doing an extraordinary job about it, so.
And he also, when there's questions, he's come back, similar to where David lives, and checked meters two or three times to see what's going on with the meters.
As a matter of fact, Mayor, he was the one that told me that he had installed that, the 20 some odd residential meters on himself.
I believe it. All right.
Excellent employee.
He is. Anything else? All right, with that being all done, we're finished with our new business and we're down to agenda setting. Can you go around the table, Bob? Mr. McLeod?
I, I have nothing.
Nothing here?
David?
Nothing here and I'll be missing the next council meeting. I'm, seriously.
Thank you.
I'd like to add the Bruce Levine issue for discussion. Is that what he asked us to do, to have discussions? Well, I'd like to add it down there.
But, point of order, personnel matters, that's an executive session.
Well, and it's also the mayor's prerogative, it's not councils', is it?
And it's also, they're, that's, that's an autonomous, that's-
Yeah, it's not even a city, it's not a-
No, we can't do anything.
Okay, did he want us to discuss his issue or the issue in general? As in-
Doesn't matter, it's personnel and it's parks.
So, we cannot add? Okay.
It's parks.
Okay, second thing, uh, we need to schedule a workshop on the food truck situation stuff? Is that an agenda thing or just telling Diane?
Uh, we can have a workshop, uh, I'll see if we can get together when we can get people together for a workshop.
Maybe in August or something? Okay. And then, and I'm not sure, I don't remember how to do this, um, I would like to add, re-add the discussion of ordinance 2223 to the agenda so we can figure out steps we can take as opposed to what happened tonight, just one flat-out thing that was risky, but a proper discussion of what can be done, the pros, the cons, the ins, the outs, you know what I'm saying?
We beat the horse to death.
Uh, no, we did one thing. That was it. What are the options that we have to take steps? And I'm looking at the attorney.
Well, we need, get a second.
I'll second that, 'cause I won't be here.
You won't be here.
He won't be here either.
Jeez.
I just thought you would love that, folks.
Well, yeah, it would help if we knew what our options were rather than just saying yes or no.
You know, James, just more discussion.
Nope, that's it.
I don't want it to die tonight.
Look, we don't have, we don't have an issue.
We'll get-
So, we, we, we don't have, we, we can't take any action because we don't have any issue to take an action on, is what I'm saying. But I have nothing else to add to the, um, and the, and the sake of parks, um, I don't know whether this, what, you know, the reason I voted against the formation of the Parks Commission in the first place is because there was no oversight from the city council. We didn't have a member of the city council on that commission. And apparently, it seems to me that they're beginning to run amok over there. They did, apparently did not follow the procedure.
Uh, we're, we're on agenda, if you want to-
Should we put, okay, maybe we're not ready to put amending the, the enabling legislation for the Park Commission on the agenda yet, but I think we're getting close to having to change that. Uh, at least it's-
Do you have it? Do you want anything on the agenda?
No, not yet. I guess, I guess we have to wait a little while, but we need to make some changes there.
Okay, council comments? Bob?
I swear I'm always first. I would like to speak to the young man that was here about his car window, uh, because I think a lot of us have forgotten, you know, what it's like not to have any money, to be able to deal with a problem. And I think the news that we had to give you was that it's gonna take two weeks to get your request for money approved. But I don't think that was delivered to you in a very compassionate or kind way. And I would like to apologize for my part in that.
Thank you. Terry?
Um. Had a good time at the Blues Festival Friday night, by golly, that was a great show. And, so I hope it was a good, a good weekend for everybody. Other than that, I'm, I'm, I'm okay.
James?
Yeah, I'd like to echo those sentiments. I'd like to thank Lori and Charles Ragsdale for, uh, keeping the Blues Festival going. Uh, probably our second big, biggest weekend of the year after, uh, about third, I guess. Valentine's weekend, Memorial and Blues Festival have been best so far this year. So, thanks again to all the volunteers because you can't do these kind of things without the volunteers and they're the ones who step up because of their love of music and particularly the blues. And, uh, saw a lot of happy faces and people and, uh, open air concerts in the park. And thank goodness the weather accommodated us this weekend because it's been pretty bleak for the last month. That's all.
All right, thank you. David?
No, actually, I don't think I have any comments. I think if I took the opportunity to say what I wanna say, I would probably regret it later, so I'll just not do it.
Mickey?
I'd like to reiterate what Bob said. I think we need to work harder or talk with the entities that need to know when something like this happens, people have to be told by city personnel that you have to do this, that and the other. Apparently, that didn't happen this time, or it wasn't clear because the poor guy didn't know to submit all of this to the city. Um, so we need to work harder on that, make it so that our people know and understand thoroughly the situation. That being said, I would like to tell everybody Happy Father's Day yesterday. All of us were so upset at the last meeting, nobody said, "Then have a good Father's Day." So, I hope you all did. And on the Bruce Levine thing, and I know absolutely zero, just like everybody else does, I would like to say I have been fired once in my life. Took me forever to pull it out and I got fired for doing the job I got hired to do because it made the owner's wife look dumb. So, I can sympathize first. I hope you can find out what's going on and see what we can do.
Ms. Sellers?
No, I don't think so.
All right. Um, we've got a good piece of news. Last week, uh, Senator Brian King called me and said that we have received a $220,000 grant for work on our, uh, storm sewer down at, um, intersection of Steel, Water, Armstrong.
The tunnel.
The tunnel, so we're getting some more work done on the tunnel. That's our other, that was a big problem.
What's the catch?
No catch, it's $220,000 from the Arkansas Economic Development Commission. I thought, uh, uh, he called and told us this even before the Northwest Arkansas Economic Development were aware of it, so. I was real excited that, that we did get the grant. And of course, I also, while I was on the phone, I thanked him and, and put a bug in his ear about money for Black Bass Dam too. And we actually applied, I got, uh, a call from, uh, Economic Development wanting to know, and again, talking about costs, whether or not we had a half a million dollar to a million dollar project they were looking for, uh, grants to be given. And so, we had, uh, of course, the Black Bass Lake and, uh, more storm sewer work of about 600 and almost $700,000 that we could apply for. They said we could've get up to a million, but unfortunately, we would have to match 20% of it. So, I said, "Let's go back down to the other part. If we can get that, especially if it's Black Bass Lake, then we can pull money from, from the parks, public works and from our general revenue to match that money," I think. Uh, I don't know whether we'll get it, but they said it's a good chance, uh, that we may be able to get that money too. So, I was real excited over that. I mean, that was a, it was something that came up, they had extra money left over and wanted to know if we had any projects, and we were one of three cities.
Must be nice.
So, yeah. All right, uh, activities coming up, June 19th through July 17th, Opera in the Ozarks, 60/50 Year. They're having some great, uh, opera out there. If you get a chance to go out and hear them, it's a great, great entertainment, great venue. Uh, June 23rd through 25th, there's a Vulcan Rider Rally. July the 3rd, the offices are gonna be closed because of 4th of July. And July the 4th is Eureka Springs Birthday Celebration in Basin Park, from 12 to 2. And also, we'll have a 4th of July Parade at 4:00 PM. And then that night, uh, 6 to 8, we'll have the drummings in the park. And then one of my favorite weekends on 7th through the 12th is the Floor Delicious Weekend. Thanks, James and Teresa for-
Oh, Eileen Powell and Teresa.
Eileen and everybody for getting that all put together. July the 11th is the Second Saturday Music Series at the Basin Park, 5 to 7. And July the 11th will be the Second Saturday Gallery Show, 6 to 9. And that's all I have.
Motion to adjourn.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Go on, nobody wants to go, okay.
Thanks, guys.
Okay, Mr. Bob, do you know-